Good afternoon and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of Monday, April 14th, 2025. Please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted by the rear door by which you entered. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short moment of silent meditation, and remain standing if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business for the City Council is as follows. The clerk shall call the items listed on the agenda. Under public reading, any, under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public addressing the council to identify themselves first, then the name of any organization they may represent and their address unless the address department has been waived to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item, and testimony is limited to five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads the item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant may make one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for the day nor planned for a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. And with that, I look forward to the first item of business, which is the Mayor's Award of Excellence. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor's Award of Excellence for the City Council Meeting of Monday, April 14th.
Well, good afternoon, Chairperson Washington, members of the council. Thank you for having me back once again to present the Mayor's Award of Excellence for December 2024. Today, I am so pleased to be giving this award to Matt Baker, who is a Community Resource Specialist with the Lincoln Police Department. Matt was nominated in the category of Public Health and Safety by Lincoln Police Department Sergeant Jeff Sorensen and Community Resource Specialist Daryl King for his outstanding contributions to LPD's gang prevention efforts. For the past decade, Matt has been the face of Operation Tipping Point. I know many of you are familiar with that program through our Joint Budget Committee and the work that we do to resource that. This is a program that we do in partnership with Lincoln Public Schools, and in this role to prevent gang membership and activity, Matt has just made an incredibly positive and lasting contribution, impacting the lives of hundreds of youth at risk, making our community even safer and more inclusive. Matt's dedication reached new heights last year when he played a pivotal role in developing a new position to expand Operation Tipping Point. And while continuing his existing work to mentor over 100 youth, Matt made time to create this new position, assist in the hiring for it, participate in candidate interviews, and train the mentor, to train and mentor the new hire. That new hire, Daryl King, is with us today, and he now works alongside Matt and went on to nominate him for this award. King highlighted Matt's exceptional dedication to mentoring and supporting youth at a crossroads. King emphasized Matt's incredible efforts to help all eligible students with, under his guidance, graduate from high school. Last year, he got a perfect record, 20 for 20. So that's the kind of work that, I think we all agree, truly changes lives. That's also the kind of work that King highlighted in his nomination letter when he wrote, quote, "I feel deeply honored to have learned from Matt and witnessed firsthand his invaluable contributions to our community." Another way that Matt contributes to our community is by supporting the Native American community. And as a member of the Lakota Tribe, he takes time to assist tribes, create documentaries about Native life, and help manage a Native crisis line. Sorensen and King summarized Matt's exemplary work this way, quote, "Matt is an inspiration to us all and should be commended for his continued dedication to enriching the lives of youth." And I would add that Matt's incredible example really enriches all of us, which is why I'm so proud to present him with this Mayor's Award of Excellence. And Matt, could you come on up, and I'll hand this to you? All three places with Chief Morrow. She can come say a few words. You can stay there.
Well, I'm going to make this pretty short because I know that I spoke with Matt, and he's willing to share a little about, about the program and his work. And no one can speak more passionately and eloquently about his dedication to Tipping Point than Matt himself. But what I want to share is how incredibly proud I am to have him as a member of the Lincoln Police Department. The Lincoln Police Department, almost probably since inception, since the 70s, has been a community-based policing organization. And when we talk about community-based policing, that means it's a balanced approach and that we can't do this ourselves. And we get the pleasure of having Matt and his passion and dedication working with us to impact youth in our community who very much deserve that individualized care and attention. And it would be minimizing to say that he gets, he gives up almost all of himself. I know that there's always work-life balance, but I know from conversations that he will answer that call. He will make visits when those youth need him. And sometimes that is the after-hours, it's the weekends. So his level of commitment truly has what has made this program so incredibly successful. And 20 for 20 is, is one year, but we can reflect back on all of the years and really recognize the impact that he has had on so many youth in our community and really changed their trajectory. And again, I just, I can't speak highly enough, and I hope that we can continue to grow the program in future partnerships. Matt?
I'm honored to be here. I just want to give a shout out to Daryl. He's probably going to be sweating bullets here, but he, he's amazing. And he really has brought in new life to Tipping Point, and we have had great success this year. So just shout out to him. When I first started this about 10 years ago, I had no idea that I was ever going to work for the police department. I was asked to apply for the position, and when I arrived at the police department for my interview, well, they asked if I could just show up to the interview. So they called me and said, hey, can you, can you show up? And I'm like, I'm wearing flip-flops and like khaki shorts. So that's what my interview was in, was khakis and flip-flop shorts, or flip-flops. And Jeff Sorensen and Marty Feringer, they interviewed me, and they completely blew me out of the water how kind they were. You could see that they were not what I projected a police officer to be. And so after that first interview, I knew like, this is where I want to be at. And I had, we had no idea what this position was. My first day, we started creating it. And one thing that, since day one, was that nothing's going to get in the way of doing the right thing. And so that has been the foundation. And to be honest, I don't know if we could do that if this program wasn't in LPD, because I have to spend less energy trying to get the money with the grants and, and those things, you know, it's, it's, it's our chief, it's Sarah Hoyle, it's all these really great people that do the work behind the scenes. So thank you guys. I am somebody that pushes back a lot, in a kind way. I just really think that the kids that we serve, what usually works for other kids doesn't work for the kids that we get to work with. For whatever reason, the system imbalance, or whatever is going on in our life, it's, it's not working for them. And so we do things completely different, and, and I think that's why it works. We have the ability to reach kids, to reach them where they need to be met at. So if that is working, we, I go all the way down to third grade, all the way up to seniors in high school. Those seniors that all graduated last year were ones I met in elementary. If this was just a standard program, I don't think I could follow them that long. But I have the grace from the police department and the backing from you guys to help us do what we do. So I appreciate every one of you, and I appreciate LPD. My family is in the back, behind me. Loving you guys is like magic. You guys are magic to me. My wife, Tara, my son Nash, my amazing daughter, Taylin. I actually have an aunt and uncle hanging out back there, too, Ron and Bev. One thing that is, I love the kids I work with. I absolutely love them. And I think one thing, for me, most people that I call family are not blood-related. And so loving those kids, that's what we do. And it gets confusing to people because I actually call the kids that I work with my kids, you know. So I'm like, hey, my kids are playing basketball. They're like, oh, I didn't know your kids were in ninth grade. Like, no, no, I mean, like, the kids I'm working with, they're my kids. And so that is, that's really the foundation. And LPD's been amazing, truly, truly amazing. And I hope that we can highlight the great things that the police department does, because it's always happening. Just one more quick, sorry, I'm native, so I make like a, what is it, a short story long. There was, years ago, this happened some years ago, but it really just, I always like highlighting, in the gang unit, there was some officers, good friends of mine, they were involved in an incident where a van tried to run them over. There were shots fired. Two days later, they're playing soccer with the kids I work with. Yeah. So to see that LPD, the officers that I know, they're always there. If I call them, yes, I'm going to be there, even if it's just to hang out. And so just to humanize the, these officers, I think are, is really important. It may not be the main thing we do, but it is important to highlight those things, especially to us adults that may not understand. I think a police officer that only answer calls is a bad police officer. A police officer that goes out and shakes your hand, a police officer that smiles, those are the good ones. And I think that we should keep continuing to promote those things within our police department. So thank you guys much. Johancy, good seeing you. Me and Johancy graduated Lincoln High together. I just got to give that a shout out. I got to, I mean, you know, so some of us, you know, I just, I love seeing you over there. All right. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Matt. Your words about not letting anything get in the way of doing right warms my heart, gives me hope, makes me realize that all of us are doing our service in order to make Lincoln better. Thank you for doing a massive amount of good for Lincoln. All right.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mayor. Give just a few minutes. What a good start to the session. Always feels good to be surrounded by good. And with that, Madam Clerk, let's move on to Section 1 Consent Agenda.
Next on our agenda is Consent Agenda, Sections 1, 2, and 3.
All right. Is there anyone here first from staff to report on any of these items in Section 1 or 2? Okay. Then is there anyone here to speak on a consent agenda item, either Items 1A, B, 2A, or 2B? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, we may move into a voting session.
I'll call Item 1A, Reappointing Nancy Hove-Growell to the Historic Preservation Commission for Terms to Expire April 15th of 2028, introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any conversation? Madam Clerk?
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1B is Investment Activity Report for Quarter Ending February 28th of 2025, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any conversation? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Items 2A and 2B were introduced by Showb.
So moved.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Madam.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right. Moving ahead to public hearing liquor resolutions.
I'll call Items 4A and 4B together. Application of Golf Experience LLC, doing business as Golf Experience for a Class I Liquor License located at 7125 South 29th Street, Suite D, and the related manager application of Scott Holly.
All right. Mr. Holly, come on forward.
Okay.
All right. Please introduce yourself and your business address.
My name is Scott Holly. I'm a PGA member. My business is Golf Experience. It's a golf simulator bar and grill. It's located at 7125 South 29th.
All right. Thank you and welcome.
Thanks.
Do any councilors have questions for this application?
Yeah.
I have one.
Okay.
Could you tell me, have you had your liquor training, or?
Yes.
Okay, so it's already done and completed?
Correct.
All right, thank you. That's the only question we have.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here today in chambers who would like to speak on behalf of this application, either in support or in opposition? Seeing no one come forward, Madam Clerk, let's move ahead.
I'll call Item 4C and D together. Application of Lincoln Petroleum LLC, doing business as NP Mart 29 for a Class D Liquor License located at 1448 North 48th Street, and the related manager application of Ann Gordon.
Welcome.
Welcome. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is the 24th liquor license in Nebraska for the applicant with an exemplary record. Second location in Lincoln for the applicant. They're hoping to open in the coming months. It's always TBD with construction. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions from councilors?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Is there anyone here in chambers who would like to speak on this application, either in support or in opposition? That's the applications indicated by 4C and D. Seeing no one come present, we can move forward.
I'll call Item 4E, Application of Salt Mine City LLC, doing business as Salt Mine City Brewing Company for an addition of an indoor area measuring approximately 90 feet by 40 feet and an outdoor area measuring approximately 20 feet by 15 feet at 801R Street, Suite 100.
Okay. Is this applicant present? Come on down.
Marty Roper with Salt Mine City Brewing Company, 801R Street, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Okay, welcome. Mr. Roper, you want to talk to us a little bit about your application?
Yes, we, we're looking to expand in the, the old Bourbon Street area. We're already consistent, we're currently using the kitchen and serving food and beverages in the, our previous area. We would like to expand the area and patio seating to the south of us, which was the old Bourbon Street.
Are there any questions for Mr. Roper?
No, it's exciting.
All right.
When?
Oh, yeah.
How soon?
Well, I'm currently waiting on Speedway to finish up the, the inspection of the firebox for the fire alarms. Everything else is done, and then I can have Chuck come back and get everything approved. So, pretty close.
All righty.
All right.
Sounds wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone here today in chambers who'd like to speak on this application? Seeing none, we'll move forward.
I'll call Item 4F, Application of Red Zone Sports Bar and Grill LLC, doing business as Red Zone Sports Bar and Grill, for an addition of an outdoor area measuring approximately 25 feet by 15 feet at 3111 Northwest 12th Street.
Hello, I'm Scott Rowland. I'm here with the Red Zones Sports Bar and Grill at 3111 Northwest 12th Street. We're just trying to extend our liquor license to the beer garden that we build outside.
Okay. And do you expect to open that soon?
Yeah, I mean, we're open, we're operating. We, we actually built the beer garden before we opened, but we applied for the liquor license. We weren't sure when the construction was going to be done, but it did get done before. We're now just kind of getting around to it because it's spring, like, we weren't worried about it during the winter, so.
Understood.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Rowland? All righty, good luck. Is there anyone here today who'd like to speak on this application, either in support or in opposition? Seeing no one come forward, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
I'll call Item 4G, Application of Fast Taco LLC, doing business as Tipsy's Tina's Taco Cantina for special designated licenses to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 35 feet by 100 feet at 800Q Street on May 3rd and 5th from 2:00 p.m. till 11:55 p.m.
Welcome.
Thank you. Joel Chasso, Tipsy Tina's Taco Cantina, doing business as Fast Taco LLC, 800Q Street. This will be our Cinco de Mayo event. The plan is to do it on Saturday, the 3rd. In the event of inclement weather, we would change that to the 5th. On the 5th, we would do a much smaller event. If the weather's nice on the 3rd, we're going to have the big street event. On the 5th, we would do just overflow beer garden area and the parking stalls to the west of Tipsy Tina's.
A smaller footprint on the 5th if you have to do that.
Correct.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
Well, I was going to ask you, really, early May, what's the occasion? You, you led with the occasion. Yes.
If I could say one more thing, and I know it, I've said it before, but when someone does a great job, you can't say it enough. A thank you to Sony and Brandy at the City Clerk's Office and the events team. I know some of them are here. Without them, these type of events would not be possible, led by Shane Daustal. I really appreciate all the help that they provide. I don't think the people of Lincoln know that that really even exists and that they help us behind the scenes make these, continuing on the Good Vibes Day. Behind the scenes, help us make these events happen because they wouldn't happen without all of, every department in Lincoln gets involved with it. So a thank you to all of them.
Thank you for sharing your compliments because you're right. Shane's team and the Clerk's Office does a great job. All right. Is there anyone here who'd speak on this application? Seeing none, we can come forward. We can move forward. All righty. Madam Clerk?
Item 4H, Application of Near South Neighborhood Association for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 30 feet by 45 feet at 1929 C Street on May 10th from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Carmen Mauer, and a member of the Near South Neighborhood Association. You might know, yay, you might, you might know that that association is something over 50 years old, and for 40 years, we have opened our historic houses on Mother's Day in order to introduce the community to who we are, what, what our neighborhood is like, and gives you some context behind our mission. So this is, this is a special designated license that is at 1929 C Street, also known as My Deck. And what we do is that we used to just have this on Mother's Day, but we now have a VIP tour the night before, on Saturday night, and that does include a reception as part of that VIP opportunity. So that's, that is everything. I, before I walk away, I encourage all of you to go online and buy a ticket to come and, and learn more about our neighborhood that Mother's Day weekend. We'd love to see you on My Deck if you want to come there. So, any questions?
Don't see any questions. Thank you very much, Ms. Morrow. Is there, are any comments from, did I ask? If not, is there anyone here in chambers who'd like to discuss this application? You're welcome to come forward and speak on this application. All right, seeing none, we'll proceed. Thank you.
I'll call Item 4I, Application of Sidecar Cider LLC, doing business as Arrow Cider for special designated licenses to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 10 feet by 10 feet at the Hay Market Farmers Market on 7th and P Street on May 3rd, 10th, 17th, and 24th, and 31st, June 7th, 14th, 21st, 28th, July 5th, 12th, 19th, 26th, August 2nd, 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th, September 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th, October 4th, and 11th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
Is the applicant here today? All right. As Madam Clerk read off, these are, this is a special designated license for all of the days of the Hay Market Farmers Market. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this application? All right, let's proceed.
I'll call Item 4J, Application of Kinkater Brewing Company LLC, doing business as Side Show Spirits for a special designated licenses to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 15 feet by 15 feet at the Hay Market Farmers Market on 7th and P Street on May 3rd, 10th, 17th, 24th, 31st, June 7th, 14th, 21st, 28th, July 5th, 12th, 19th, and 26th, August 2nd, 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th, September 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th, and October 4th, and 11th, from 5:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m.
Is the applicant here for this application? Again, this is a special designated license for each of the farmer market days at the Hay Market Farmers Market. If anyone would like to speak on this item, they're welcome to come forward.
I got a question.
Oh, you have a question. Councilman Duden?
I see this starts at 5:00 a.m. I thought that the, the time limit was 6:00 a.m. I thought that the time limit was 6:00 a.m.
5:00 a.m., maybe, that is early, but that might be a setup time. I don't know what they're, they can't actually operate the booth until the whistle blows. City Attorney.
Just didn't.
Hans Christie, City Attorney.
Question.
I don't have the application in front of me, but I know oftentimes it's exactly like...
Setup.
Yes, like Council Chair Washington said, they'll, they'll ask for an earlier time for setup, but the event won't start until later. Same thing on the back end, a lot of times, they might ask for additional time to close up, so. And I'm just pretty sure that's what that's about.
Thank you.
It might in fact be when the LTU street crew is out there setting up the barricades and the like at 5:00 a.m. All right. Madam Clerk, let's move into voting.
I think, Madam Chair, if everybody's done, it's my turn.
Yeah, oh, it is, right. You get to say something.
I get to say something, yes. Madam Chair, having had public hearing on all these items and seen no one else coming forward, I would like to make a motion that we approve items 4A through 4J.
I'll second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion from the dais? Madam Clerk.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Thank you. All right, we can move forward to public hearing resolutions.
I'll call item 5A, accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city from March 16th through March 31st of 2025.
All right. Is there anyone here in chambers who has a claim against the city and would like to approach us? Again, if you have a claim against the city and you'd like us to discuss it, please come forward. I see no one coming forward. Madam Clerk, let's proceed.
I'll call item 5B, approving the, excuse me, approving the 101 North 14th Street redevelopment project between the city of Lincoln and Tallgrass Development, Inc., relating to the redevelopment property generally located at 101 North 14th Street.
Okay. Urban development, is Director Peter Hind available? I know we're delaying, but if he'd like to, if he's in the building, he can come forward.
We'll do public hearing anyway and then delay.
Yeah.
I think I'm supposed to make a motion on that.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay. So, if anyone is here today to speak on this item, the redevelopment item at 101 North 14th Street, you may come forward and register your comments. But we were alerted a little bit earlier today that this item will be put on a hold. Seeing no one come forward.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to delay this to for a month till May 12th, and it's because of a timing issue.
And will public hearing still be available at that time?
We'll continue public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Duden.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Beckius, the second. And just because it's sometimes a little confusing when we make a delay of a month, if there's anyone here today who wanted to speak on this item, you may come forward. If not, you may come forward on May 12th when this comes back to the agenda. Councilors, any discussion on what we're voting on? All right, Madam Clerk, let's call the vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. I'll call the vote for item 5A, accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city from March 16th through March 31st of 2025, introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Carlson.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right, let's move forward to ordinances, third reading.
My turn, right?
I'll call item 6A, Street and Alley Vacation 25002, application of Chateau Properties North LLC to vacate a portion of Granger Parkway right of way, generally located at South 44th Street and Dillon Drive, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
I'll second.
In place of Weber was Mr. Schob. I know your name. Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right.
Section 7 is our resolutions, items 7A through 7C. Ordinances, excuse me, section 8 is ordinances, first readings, and related resolutions are items 8A through 8E, and then our pending list are items 9A through 9E.
All right. Thank you very much. As I noted at the start of the meeting, on the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an item not on today's agenda nor planned for a future agenda. Everyone, each person coming forward will have five minutes in order to speak about any number of items that they'd like to have counsel hear, and we only ask that each speaker maintains civility and allow the business of counsel to proceed unimpeded. With that, the floor is open for anyone who'd like to speak this afternoon. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Roy Helm. I identify with the pronouns of he and him. I reside at 2750 South 13th Street, which is on Oto, Missouri land. I'm a little late in this acknowledgement, wasn't able to get here, but during, I believe it was the last winter storm we had, there was a tree that got blown over into the southbound lane of South 13th Street, 2700 block, and it happened rather late, I think it was around 11 o'clock, and I just wanted to acknowledge that LTU was protecting it with the snow removal equipment until a crew could come out and remove the tree that night, almost immediately. And I just wanted to offer appreciation for those individuals that endured those harsh conditions, abysmal conditions, and, you know, made our streets safe. So, there is appreciation for the work that LTU does, and it should not go unacknowledged. As a result of that storm, we did have a lot of dirt and grit that got somehow blown from the north from Texas and New Mexico and Oklahoma, hard to say that state. But I was waiting for rain to wash it away, and we haven't had that rain. So, thinking in terms of using water and hosing patios down and furniture down, it got me thinking about how we use water in our city and our state, and how with the lack of precipitation we had last year and with a dry winter and so far a very dry spring, that perhaps it would behoove us that the city encouraged people to conserve water through public service announcements, maybe voluntary restrictions like we've had in the past. It just seems to be an important factor, especially as we're, you know, we're heading into summer, and I think the prospects are for a dry season. So, we do need to be proactive. I know there are those that are more concerned with how much water pressure and water comes out of their showerhead than having water to drink, but having just visited a place where having safe drinking tap water isn't available, and we were even asked to restrict our water usage just to conserve water so that they would have more until they hopefully get to the rainy season. So, I think it's a cue that we can take. I know I'm not perfect and can't be judgmental on others about their water usage, but I know that we've tried to change our practices, and, you know, I think there are good uses for water, and if we can reclaim it, it's great. But that's was my ask, and thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Tracy Axmit. Thank you, Councilor Bowers, for your call last week to speak up about performance concerns. Oh, I'm Tracy Axmit, 7201 Willow. Skip that part, sorry. Your call last week, your call prompted me to complete an audit of what I've seen develop over the last nearly two years. You said that you want to ensure that we have clarity on the record regarding Board of Health members. You said that you hadn't heard of any concerns. I'll give you three. Number one, a lack of response by the Board of Health to a reasonable request for an investigation into overfluoridation. This is a 10-page summary of the stack of communications, Councilor Bowers. Many of these communications I copied to you by email. In one case, in July 2023, I personally delivered a request to investigate the overfluoridation issue to every board member. I hand-delivered this request to the Health Department Director's Office, and I emailed you a copy. I received no response from any Board of Health member on that request. Number two, I was told that my request to add a cautionary note to the annual water quality report regarding the fluoride risk to infants was discussed at the February 2025 Port of Health meeting. The meeting minutes do not reflect this discussion. Lincoln Utilities reported to me that at the February meeting, quote, "It was recommended that a statement was not necessary based on the most current research and fluoride policy recommendations by the American Academy of Pediatric Dentistry and the American Academy of Pediatric Physicians." Accordingly, this statement was not included in the 2024 quality, water quality report," unquote. Was this issue discussed? The only fluoride item recorded in the minutes was a vote on a resolution in full support of fluoridation. Recently, the Health Department Dental Division Manager provided supporting documentation for that determination, noting that both Drs. Garcia and Bliker were consulted on the matter. The manager concluded with, quote, "Dr. Bliker and Dr. Garcia shared findings along with Dr. Jackie Miller, general dentist, and recommendations to the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department Board of Health," unquote. I recommend you take a look at those supporting documentations for yourself to determine whether or not you agree with Dr. Anderson Berry's March LB 147 testimony. Number three, a lack of clarity regarding Board of Health guidance. From April 2023, city utilities denied the ability to lower the fluoride treatment level due to what they said was, quote, "State of Nebraska drinking water regulations," unquote. In July 2023, they confirmed that, quote, "Lincoln Water System and our partners at Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department work together to ensure that we provide the highest quality, safe drinking water," unquote. Also, in July 2023, NDE confirmed that the 1983 Nebraska DHHS fluoride regulation was indeed outdated and that, quote, "Public water systems are encouraged to operate their fluoridation programs according to the updated recommendation," unquote, referencing the updated 2015 CDC recommendation. Over one year later, in September 2024, city utilities changed their claim when they wrote that to make any change in the fluoride treatment level, they would need updated guidance from NDE. Was LTU waiting for the DHHS regulation updated, update that finally occurred in July or in January of '25? Or were they to follow NDE guidance? It took the Lincoln Lancaster County Board of Health until January 2025 to adjust the fluoridation level, when 68% of water systems nationally adjusted their treatment programs within six months of the 2011 draft issue.
Thank you.
In conclusion, if I could finish, in conclusion, I see that the Board of Health manual is being developed. That's good. Hopefully, the manual will clarify the board, the role of the board, whether policymaking or guidance. As Councilor Duden and Commissioner Schulte both indicated last week, there are opportunity, there's an opportunity to assemble a board with the ability to be more, as you said, Councilor Bowers, in touch with the community. In my view, that would be a board that better reflects the entire community. How can you adequately evaluate a person or an issue by only looking at a segregated set of data interpreted by a segregated set of perspectives? I have more, and I would be glad to share with anyone interested. I understand mistakes happen, and I, grace is always the best, we're always learning. But now that you are aware, there continue to be life and death, public health matters that are inexcusable and need to be corrected immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to submit those in writing?
You know where to find me if you want them.
We do. Thank you, Ms. Axmit.
And I'll just respond to that. Tracy, we'll have a chat later on, because I would love to hear what you had to say about some of that, especially as it relates to the roles of the Board of Health, because the Board of Health does not control like the fluoridation levels and whatnot, but, you know, you've always been an active engaged citizen, which I've really appreciated, so I look forward to talking with you more about this and clarifying the Board of Health's role and whatnot, and love to look over what you have.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
Anyone else?
My name is Anastasia Finner. I'm going to wave my address for my own safety. It's been hundreds of days of continued genocide in Gaza and Palestine facilitated in part by Lincoln, Nebraska, and still, none of our leaders, none, have done anything or said anything to do anything about it. No one has made any kind of public statement. We've had council members tell us point blank, "You want us to shame a business? Yes, we want you to shame a business, a business that does nothing but kill children." That's exactly what they do. They build bombs, 2,000-pound bombs that are dropped on tents. That is, that is what they do. That is part and parcel what Lincoln funds, right? There's a private-public partnership where the city of Lincoln pays people to gain certain industrial skills. Some of those people get first picks by a company called General Dynamics, which is the company in Lincoln that builds bombs that kill children. So, Lincoln taxpayer dollars are used to train these people at General Dynamics, and General Dynamics just recently was put on the Lincoln Manufacturing Council Advisory Board, which is beyond the pale grotesque, because the people that are on that board have been inside these chambers, they are aware of what is going on in Palestine. We have occupied the exact same space, and those people are choosing to put General Dynamics in an advisory position, right? The city is allowing a company that exists solely for the purpose of killing to be in advisory position. The only thing that General Dynamics wants is money, and it gets that by making things that kill people. Not only does it directly kill people, of course, 2,000-pound bombs create massive craters, especially when they're dropped on tents of refugees, some of which could very well have already been in Lincoln. There are a very, very diverse population here in Lincoln. I've met Palestinian folks here in Lincoln. Some of them, I'm sure, had returned to Palestine before October 7th, 2023, and I'm sure that some of them are now dead because the city of Lincoln has not done anything to quell the 2,000-pound bombs. to quell the 2,000-pound bombs that are dropped on civilians. We also make MK-82s, MK-84s, guidance systems for Hellfire missiles, things that are dropped on hospitals. We want to talk about drinkable water. There's no drinkable water in Gaza. We have bombed hospitals. We have bombed plants that take salty seawater and turn it into drinkable water. This has been going on for over a year. It has gotten so much worse. I... Am I really to believe that the City of Lincoln does not even casually see the existence of children in its society? Whether it's school buses, whether it's them lining up outside for fire drills, whether it is your own children. I, it is impossible to look at them and not see the faces of those children in Palestine. It is impossible. There is such great shame in this city for wanting to take credit for being good when we are doling out the most evil. Just because the air around you is breathable and not tainted doesn't mean that the air that we create in far-off places is better. We are making the world a less safe place. There is no expectation that a community that destroys another's ability to drink water will instill that their own community has safe water to drink. We see this through the failures of folks like Sandra Washington and how they allowed Snell Hill to be destroyed, and how we had seen in this very chambers video evidence of runoff going into Salt Creek that was promised would never happen. Don't shame a business, though.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in chambers who'd like to address counsel today?
Madam Chair, seeing no one else coming forward, oh, my apologies.
Maybe wait more than 15 seconds.
We're going to get you a microphone.
Yeah. Okay, good. Give me one second.
Hello?
Good afternoon and welcome.
Magician. Good afternoon, City Council members. I'm just going to update you to an experience I had targeting LGBTQ. It's the same story I mentioned before. I went to McKinney's. Now I'm dropping all the names. And so I was there, you know, I'd be there like from like 1:00 to 4:00. I do it like every seven to 10 days in the spring and fall, and they had no problem with me. And then the night before the first UNL game, I, I wouldn't have gone if I had, if I would have just realized what was, you know, all the people from Western Nebraska, and so it was packed. And so I was asked to leave, and after 45 minutes, I had one beer. And then I ordered, 45 minutes, and then I ordered another one, and that's when someone came, said I had to go. I happened to ask why, and they happened to answer, "Because you made sexualizing comments to the staff, and we caught you quote-unquote jerking off here three years ago." Now, I, I knew, I was told that I wasn't going to win this case, and I didn't. Do you know, it's interesting that if you fear for your safety, that you cannot trespass, fearing for your safety like around the corner, a few hundred feet, it is not, it is not an excuse for trespassing. And, you know, I, my experience, you know, neighborhood bar, you know, it was packed. If I would have left after she said, screamed that, and then I said, "F you twice really aloud to her," because I couldn't believe it, I guess that's where I got disturbing the peace. Anyhow, so we went to court. And the woman that took the beer out of my hand wasn't even her. And when I said, "Hey, how did I grab your wrist when, when I'm holding a beer with one hand?" Because this one doesn't work. And, and then apparently I learned that someone talked to me and let me come back after catching me quote-unquote jerking off. And I, I wasn't aware of this, but apparently that's why they let me stay allegedly, you know, I guess. And so I got, I got a $100 fine for trespassing, a $100 fine for disturbing the peace. I was like laughing during, during, you know, the whole thing. In fact, the prosecutor, you know, the prosecutor knew, and as a calculated intentional act, I went and I said, because, because as proof, this is, I didn't do it to be rude. I said, "Can you tell so-and-so to come out? I just want to tell him to F himself." And so I said, "I'm sorry I'm saying that word, but that's what I want to tell him." Anyway, so he came out and, you know, "I heard you, you made this cut." I said, "I just wanted to go tell you, F yourself." And he turned around and went back in. Now, I have no problem with this person, nice, but I had to do that. You know, I guess I don't state intentions sometimes. So I did that without repercussion, and that was the whole point. So you can just do that to someone. Oh, another thing. I moved, you know, working on the elevator in the Granger Building, so I moved to the Hardy Building for a couple of months, moved back. And I guess they hired Black Belt Moving, and so on the, on the return trip, I got a crack in my table, and my subwoofer, I have a good one because I'm in bed sometimes 22 hours a day, and there was a dented corner. And, you know, I, they, and so I asked him if you, you know, looked into it. He said, "I have to call." And I said, "You know what? You pay for it. You pay for it." And he said, "Well, we use this mover from time to time." Well, then aren't you curious why they gave me $18 for the cracked table? And did they, you know, how, how did they save that $18? So what it was is, it was targeted to inspire me because I had previously, a while ago, I got upset about something, and I said, "I just have to get off the phone." And so when I'm, when I'm encumbered with insanity, and, you know, he won't budge, and so I start, you know, you know, and they kicked me out for being belligerent because I couldn't comprehend, and I think they knew. And so, you know, I went to ask, I said, "I was sorry." And not only that, but a person by the name of Jeff Folsen in my building, I gave him the opportunity to come in here. And he told me, because I, I don't think he can lie. He told me, you know, that, you know, I was, I was just new to the building 10 years ago. I'm in a wheelchair, he's in a wheelchair. We got, we start talking, you know, I'm smoking a cigarette. And then he said, he happened to mention, "Don't let Celeste, you know, one of the, you know, the husband and wife in the Granger Building, don't let, don't you let her like, you know, smoke basically, or do something like that because she has a nose of a bloodhound, and she does, and suffers from it as a result." But, and so, because she, he said, "What she'll do is she'll bide her time and essentially see to it that you're gone." I don't want to put words, but that's, that's exactly. And so I figure that they wanted me to...
Josephine, Ms. Josephine, your time, you spent 5 minutes and 20 seconds.
Holy moly. Anyway, thanks for listening, and the problem is, is that I lose my waiver, right? So, no, I'm sorry, I lose my voucher because everybody knows, I'm sorry if I can continue, that giving somebody a couple of months of 60-day notice for a handicapped person to find another place to live, and he didn't offer me a mutual termination of lease so that he knows that's going to render me to a nursing home. And I was targeted, and they did it, well, anyway, I'm giving people the opportunity. It's coming two weeks. Let's bring them in. Thank you for the extra time.
You're welcome.
I'm not putting up with this discrimination. I mean, I'm principled, you know, I'm going to be dead, just me, nobody else. And it's going to be for the LGBTQ plus cause, and I know that some people on, on the board don't like to draw attention because of violence, and I don't want to cause anybody violence, but, you know, I'm not putting up with this crap because that's just how I am. Sorry again. I guess have a good one.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to approach the counsel? All right, seeing none, I will take a motion for adjournment.
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
I second.
Second, Duden. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right.